That's it.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing? It's so nice to see everybody here. Hello to everybody at home. This is the June 12th, 2025 Combined Work and Regular Session of the Borough of Allendale Mayor and Council Meeting. So, welcome. It's wonderful to see everybody. Linda, will you please call the meeting to order and read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meetings, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the June 3rd, 2025 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yakarino.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilwoman Holman. Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Here.
Councilman Delavicio.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Wozinski.
Here. Please, Ryan, please go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands that one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a fun meeting today. I'm really happy to be able to see everybody here. There was something that really, truly amazing happened in our town. There is really no on and off switch for our first responders. There's always that instinct to act in an emergency, and especially when lives are in balance, and that's exactly what happened. Thank you all for coming. Some of you, I know, were off duty, some of you on your own time, having a meal, and you were faced with a situation that demanded quick thinking, courage, and action. And without hesitation, you answered that call. So, to George, Tyler, Cole, Linda, and Good Samaritans Denise, Sabrina, and Leonora, we thank you. And also, thank you to the amazing job our police continue to do to serve our community, Anthony, Dimitri, Chris, Sergeant Jamie, and Detective Chris, as well as our dispatcher, Michael. You were all part of an elite team that worked in sync together, and you saved a life. And it was the life of somebody who's really beloved in Allendale, Eddie Vasselli. He came to this country 30 years ago. And he's been in our town in Allendale for 22 years? 23 years. He owns three restaurants in our town, and he's beloved by so, so many. And how lucky are you to have EMTs and paramedics just eating at Morning Bloom that day? So, someone was looking out for you, for sure. What you all did is a powerful reminder to all of us that, you know, your service that you do to the community, all of you, it's not just a job, it's a calling. That true first responders and Good Samaritans, they don't wait to be asked, they step in when they're needed, whether they're on duty or not. So, I do think of Eddie, I think of his family, I think of your wife, I think of your kids, and all the friends that you have throughout this community, and the heartbreak that you all spared for all of us. Because of you all, someone really special is alive today. So, on behalf of myself and the council, thank you all for being courageous, compassionate, and committed. Do you have some commendations? Do you want to? Did I miss my speech?
Roll it back.
Good thing it's recorded.
No, honestly, I was just thanking all the first responders that were there that day, and especially our public workers. You guys were always so amazing and all the service that you do for our community. And whether you're on duty or not, you're never off duty. So, you working together with the paramedics and everybody that was there, you know, saved a life, maybe saved somebody's life, that was really special, Michael. So, thank you so much, all of you, and all the paramedics.
Mayor Amy, if I could just, real quick. So, I just wanted to mention to the courageous actions of everyone that day that happened on May 9th, 2025 Morning Bloom Cafe. And, you know, their willingness to act at a critical moment exemplifies the powerful impact everyday individuals and responders can have during emergencies. I have no doubt that their actions performing CPR and defibrillation saved a life that day, and Eddie's presence here is testimony to that. This incident underscores how vital it is for members of the public to remain calm, act quickly, be prepared to assist when seconds count. When everyday people take action, they become an essential link in a chain of survival. Each year, over 350,000 out-of-hospital cardiac arrests occur in the United States. Survival rates are less than 12% on average. But when bystanders immediately begin CPR and use AED, their chances of survival increases exponentially. Public involvement saves lives, and every second truly matters. So, thank you to citizens that stepped up. Truly an honor to honor you and our first responders, both from the Police Department and Valley EMS. It really was a day that made our community, and it could have made our community, you know, in two ways, but it really, it really made us shine, and it was because of your help, so thank you.
Sabrina, Pralala?
They're supposed to front here, photographer. They're gonna look at me. Okay. They eat that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kathy. Ed, Linda Vitrau, and Paul Verne.
Well, they can pitch us now or for last. Thank you. Hold on. We'll tighten up. Okay, there we go. That's a good one. Thank you, everybody.
Guys.
Towards what?
Goes towards the crapper.
You're right. Thank you. You gotta back up. Actually, I gotta go, I guess. Bye, bye. Thank you for what you're doing, police officers. Thank you.
There. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our proclamations. Our first one, we have one for Armed Forces Appreciation Day, one for LGBTQ Pride Month, and one for Tourette Syndrome Awareness. Usually for Armed Forces, we have a ceremony, and we honor everybody who serves in the military. And it's a big undertaking, and we're going to do it actually every year now, and we'll read the proclamation every other year. Oh, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, they have an emergency call, so a bunch of them left, so I had to tell the two of Paddle leaves, I told the rest just to go with them.
Eddie, did you want an opportunity to say anything, if you wanted to, before I continue? You can go right up to the microphone if you want, or to Brian or anybody.
He wrote a speech, but he doesn't want to.
Oh.
A little weak with the vocal cords.
We'd love to hear it.
But he thinks of Allendale more of his home and family than his own home, because he spends most of his time in the Borough of Allendale. So, he's very appreciative, and his gratitude is without fail. He loves you guys, he really wants to express how thankful he is to be alive, to be there for his family, to be here to serve all you guys as family, and he's very, you know, he's alive. It's really, sorry, very scary day. So, I'm appreciative, he's appreciative, his son, the family, we're all appreciative. You know, thank you, guys, we love you, guys, and this is the best community to be in, really. Thank you, guys.
Before I go on, is there anybody else that'd like to say something?
We have Mark Dunn in the house, maybe a photo of Mark Dunn and Eddie are two of Allendale survivors.
Yeah.
I think I would just like to say, I mean, Eddie, you know, Eddie, you know how me and my family feel about you, and you know how every time, and it's not just us, it's everyone, we all frequent your establishments, and you, I mean, you, we're happy that you're here, we love you, and you make us all feel like family, we consider you to be our family, and we're happy you're here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right.
Thanks again, Mayor.
Of course.
Thanks, Jesus.
All right. Then we'll continue with our proclamation. Thank you, thank you so much.
Stay well.
Yeah, you don't have to stay for that. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
Good week.
Oh. Okay.
He was a railroad.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, of course. Okay. Honoring Armed Forces Appreciation Day. Whereas, the Armed Forces of the United States serve as a unified team at home and across the seas in pursuit of a durable peace. Whereas, our military members do not swear allegiance to an individual group or political party, their oath is to the United States Constitution. By bringing together people from different races, religions, and sexual orientations, and melding them into a cohesive fighting force, our military embodies the promise of our democratic experiment. And whereas, sacrifices that each such member of the United States Armed Forces and of the family members who support them have preserved the liberties and have enriched this nation, making it the unique-in-the-world community. And whereas, we are here today to celebrate Armed Forces Day for those American men and women in uniform who serve selfishly to preserve democracy, freedom, at home and around the world in times of war and peace. And whereas, since 1949, the third Saturday of May has been proclaimed Armed Forces Day by the President of the United States and Commander in Chief, calling all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in defense of freedom, and to honor the men and women of our Armed Forces who have served and are now serving our country together with their families. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and council of the Borough of Allendale, do hereby recognize Armed Forces Appreciation Day as a special day to show our appreciation for our military and encourage all citizens to display flags, ribbons, and other personal messages to show their gratitude throughout the year. Okay, and our next one is for LGBTQ Month. Honoring LGBTQ Plus Pride Month. Whereas, June 28th, 1969, at Stonewall Inn in New York City, a courageous group of individuals stood up against harassment and injustice, igniting the Stonewall uprising, a pivotal moment in the LGBTQ Plus rights movement that galvanized a national and global push towards equality and justice. And whereas, in the decades since Stonewall, the LGBTQ Plus community has made significant strides in the ongoing pursuit of equal rights, visibility, and acceptance. Yet, challenges persist, and the promise of full equity remains incomplete. The continued advancement of justice and inclusivity benefits all Americans and strengthens the foundation of our democracy. Whereas, every individual deserves to live with dignity, authenticity, and respect, free from discrimination, violence, and fear, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. During LGBTQ Plus Pride Month, we honor the legacy of the Trailblazers and mourn those lost to hate and injustice, and recommit ourselves to the world of building a society that embraces diversity and uplifts every voice. And whereas, the Borough of Allendale is proud to be a stigma-free community, welcoming and affirming people from all walks of life, and fostering a culture of inclusion, compassion, and understanding. Therefore, we, the mayor and council of the Borough of Allendale, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQ Plus Pride Month in the Borough of Allendale, and encourage all residents to reflect on the progress made, celebrate the contributions of the LGBTQ Plus community, and continue striving towards a more just and inclusive society. Our proclamation of the day.
You could, I'd like you to read them all again.
Honoring Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day. Whereas, Tourette Syndrome is a neurodevelopmental disorder characterized by involuntary repetitive movements and vocalizations called tics, affecting as many as 1 in 50 school-aged children. And whereas, Tourette Syndrome often presents alongside other disorders such as ADHD, OCD, and anxiety, requiring comprehensive and compassionate care. And whereas, increased awareness and understanding of Tourette Syndrome can help eliminate stigma, foster acceptance, and promote early diagnosis and treatment, ultimately improving the quality of life for those affected. And whereas, the New Jersey Center for Tourette Syndrome and Associated Disorders, along with advocates, families, and professionals across the state, is dedicated to supporting education, outreach, and advocacy for individuals living with Tourette Syndrome. And whereas, the Borough of Allendale stands in solidarity with those affected by Tourette Syndrome and supports efforts to raise awareness and understanding within the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Allendale, that June 4th is hereby recognized as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day in the borough. May it further be resolved that all residents are encouraged to learn more about Tourette Syndrome and support individuals and families living with this condition. Thank you to the residents, that brought this to our attention. And we shall continue the rest of our agenda review. So, we have our second hearing on the ordinance to amend the vehicle and traffic chapter. So, this is the transit lot, the hours are slightly adjusted. And then, we have introduction of some ordinances. One is our capital ordinance that we are introducing, where we are going to have improvements throughout the town, such as fire department equipment, streetscape, the final phase of the streetscape, the maintenance of the memorial pond and athletic fields, to name a few. We also have an ordinance just to adjust our overnight provision of parking that gives our police officers permission if we do actually need to have some cars park overnight, and we'll get a ticket. And then, we have another ordinance that is something that is needed by the state to adopt our flood hazard maps and designate floodplains. And then, we have another resolution that is for our fair share housing, where we are expressing is our intent to purchase affordable units and be able to extend the deeds on two additional units and potentially to other additional units. This is when we did a big analysis of all of our fair share housing, some of our deeds will be coming up in the next round, so we want to make sure that those are in our inventory and that they are going to go towards people that need affordable housing, and the deed will be extended. There's some changes in the law, so we wanted to make sure that we reserve the right to extend these deeds for these units. Okay. Then we have our consent agenda. These are matters that are considered routine, and they're acted in one motion. So, we have a few things I'd like to point out. We have the renewal of some liquor licenses. We have, we have actually, our MOU for our Teamsters, this is an adjustment to the contract that we did, I guess, last year. We have a couple of overpayments. We have the approval of the rainbow ribbons from the Democratic Club downtown, they're actually up already. And we have the motorola lighting already, it's on there, they're very, very, very.
Best defense of the year.
Yep. And then, we have an updated contract for the Allendale mural project that came in at a little bit less cost, because we took off some of the contingency. And then, we have the list of bills. Did you have a chance to look over that?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. So, now I'd like to open the meeting up to the public for anybody that has any comments or questions on agenda items only, please. Not seeing anybody, like, bring it in. So, we have a second reading, ordinance 25-09. Linda, please read second reading for ordinance 25-09.
The following ordinance was first read by title only on May 22nd, 2025, and posted on the bulletin boards of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance 25-9, in ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise the Code of the Borough of Allendale, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 252-62A.
I'd like to open up to the public the second reading of 25-09. Not seeing anyone, bring it back in. Roll call, motion to approve? Not roll call, motion to approve? Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have the introduction of ordinance 25-10. Please read that, Linda.
Ordinance 25-10, capital ordinance of the Borough of Allendale and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing various public improvements and acquisitions in, by, and for the borough, appropriating, therefore, the sum of $642,000, and providing that such sum, so appropriated, shall be raised from the borough's capital improvement fund and from various grants.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio.
Yes.
And Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Ordinance 25-10 has been introduced upon first reading and will be published in the Wednesday, June 18, 2025 edition of the record, and will be taken up for further consideration and final passage at the meeting of the mayor and council on Thursday, June 26, 2025, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
Thank you very much. Next, we have ordinance 25-11.
Ordinance 25-11, in ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise the Code of the Borough of Allendale, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 252-7A.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 25-11?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Ordinance 25-11 has been introduced upon first reading and will be published in the Wednesday, June 18, 2025 edition of the record, and will be taken up for further consideration and final passage at the meeting of the mayor and council on Thursday, June 26, 2025, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
Okay, next, we have ordinance, sorry. 25-12.
Ordinance 25-12, in ordinance by the Borough of Allendale, governing body amending the Borough of Allendale Code of Ordinances to repeal Chapter 132, to adopt, a new Chapter 132, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a floodplain administrator, and providing for severability and ineffectiveness.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Ordinance 25-12 has been introduced upon first reading and will be published in the Wednesday, June 18, 2025 edition of the record, and will be taken up for further consideration and final passage at the meeting of the mayor and council on Thursday, June 26, 2025, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter.
Great. Next, we have Resolution 25-161.
A resolution expressing the borough's intent to purchase two affordable units at an affordable price, to extend the deed restrictions on two other affordable units, and to reserve the right to buy two additional units at the affordable price.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Yakarino.
Abstain 173, yes, some counts, please.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman Delavicio.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Next, we have our council reports, Councilman Yakarino.
Thank you. I promised I'd keep it short.
You don't have to keep it short.
There's water in the lake, there's a concession stand built, it all's well with the world. Now, we do know that the lake has been open so far to much enjoyment. Of course, my residents on the weekends will be opening full-time next week after school lets out. Again, the concession stand looks great, like, too, I know, I thanks Amy, Suzanne, and Allison, the last meeting, Suzanne, I don't think you were here, so I'd like to thank you again for all your help and efforts and.
I was here.
Bringing, you were here?
Yeah.
Well, I'll.
But thank you, I appreciate it.
Because you were instrumental, I'm not going to die without you, and the mayor, and Allison, and so, thank you all for that. We were supposed to have our first band night last Saturday, unfortunately, it's back to the pattern of raining every weekend, so we're working on getting that rescheduled, one more band night, we are looking to finalize for, as far as our entertainment for summer, so we'll get that out in the newsletter in the very near future. So, keep it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman O'Toole.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety Committee usually meets on the second Tuesday of each month, but with this being a very hectic week, we've pushed to next Tuesday. We're actually going to be combining our monthly meeting with the pre-4th of July meeting, so it should be very productive. Congratulations to our Police Department, whose accreditation status, as of today, was renewed for another three years. Culmination of a lot of hard work here headed by Sergeant Rosendahl and Chief Dillon, so congratulations to the department chief. And we've come to an accord with the PBA after a couple of productive negotiations, at least nobody left with black eyes. All in all, we've agreed to a fair contract that will attract and keep the highest-quality officers, which is really all that we've wanted out of it, so it all is well.
Thank you very much. Councilman Lovasolo.
Thank you, Mayor. Our finance, admin, and HR meeting has been postponed due to, I think, that PBA meeting running long. meeting running long.
Oh, we got it done.
Uh, so that'll be rescheduled. Um, our land use next committee meeting will be in two weeks, so I'll have more to report then. On a personal note, I want to once again thank all of my council people and the A-Team and our friends in Allendale for your support yet again. Look at me, I'm doing it again. I'm fine, I'm holding it together, I will not cry. Um, you know, Eddie being here just reminds us all that in times of a medical crisis, time and proper care are the most important things. And I'm so thankful that in Allendale, we have a group that was able to help Eddie and our people of our town. And I'm very thankful.
I love it.
This is why I didn't do it when Eddie was here.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, DPW Committee will meet next week, uh, so I don't have much to report other than the DPW was diligent in helping getting Crestwood opened. Uh, it is opened, so, uh, good work on that. We have two seasonal employees that are helping out throughout the summer. I know Andy's got them working very hard, keep the, uh, keep the borough clean and ready to go. Uh, we did begin the assessment on our roads to check for potholes and put the program together for next year's paving and trying to do some rehabilitation on some of our roads. About half the borough is, is complete and, uh, we're gonna tackle the next half. And I also just want to, uh, you know, congratulate the police department and our first responders or, uh, you know.
Walter, you good?
Hey Walter, you all right?
Oh, scared us.
Don't scare us.
Oh, okay.
All of our, all of our bystanders that helped out. And, uh, I'm thankful that, uh, you know, people came up and helped Eddie and also Suzanne. I'm glad you're still here next to me.
Me too.
That's all I have to report and, uh, next meeting I'll have more. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councilman O'Connell.
Thank you so much, uh, Suzanne. We are all glad you're here and we're glad Eddie's here and we're thankful to all the first responders, first responders.
Cheers.
Everything they do.
Cheers.
I had the pleasure of helping Eva Lowry try to complete her gold star as a Girl Scout. There's some new bat houses up at Crestwood Lake.
Oh, are they up already?
They're up.
Oh.
They're, uh, hidden. There was four poles put in the ground, one, two poles had one house on each and two had double houses. I don't know why. Maybe it's a family thing with the bats, I don't know.
Those garbage cans that the other.
There's more coming.
Yeah, dude, look, look awesome.
I think she was making a total of fifteen.
They look amazing.
Something along that.
Oh, great.
So we have our bats out.
You had bat houses out there before. I pointed out to my son that that was a bat house that he took pictures next to when he was in his, uh, his sports. He goes, I didn't even notice that.
Thankful for our bats.
I like the bat house.
That's a good, they eat mosquito.
Eat the mosquito.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right, administration, administration. Um, lovely clerk.
I didn't prepare anything, but I do want to thank, um, the Allendale Police Department and the fire, uh, the, uh, the, uh, fire department and the DPW, um, for, uh, their assistance in escorting me down to Hackensack the night of election. Also, I want to thank my super board workers who were phenomenal and my board workers. Everything was great that night, so.
Good job.
Yeah. It seemed like it was.
Did you get some sleep?
The well-oiled machine.
I had two hours of sleep that night. I couldn't sleep, so I went to bed at one A M. and I woke up at three A M. and I was here at four fifteen. But I managed, I was fine. I had my, I work off checklist, so at the end of the night I got my check. Amanda and Dottie also, I want to thank, you know, everybody, it was teamwork, so it was great.
It was great.
Excellent.
I was home by ten thirty. Was too bad.
Does our attorney have anything to, uh, comment on?
No, just, um, you know, obviously a, uh, an emotional meeting for, for me as well, even though I'm sitting here. So, you know, Allendale's always certainly felt like a welcoming place to us as well on the professional side, and that's in no smart, small part rather to all of you. So, um, I echo everyone's sentiments, uh, thank you again. Um, couple of things, um, you know, you may have noticed a stormwater ordinance on tonight that's being rolled out county by county, uh, Bergen County, this was our turn. Um, so there is a flood plain and stormwater, um, ordinance that, that DEP is mandated, so that's why that's on the agenda. Uh, moving forward, um, I know the mayor, you touched on it last time, in terms of budget, Allendale was successful in securing on our cell phone tower some significant, um, revenue that came in, but now that we take an ownership of the tower, uh, we plan to put out a second RFP shortly.
CJ, you're cutting in and out.
Can we leave them?
It's so long.
All right, well, we'll hop back if we do. We'll move on to Mike, our chief of police.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations all the officers who commended tonight for actions saving a life of a local business owner after he suffered a medical emergency. Uh, being a police officer is much more than enforcing the law. Public safety is paramount, no matter how duty calls. So many times there are factors at play that are beyond our control. It's nice when the stars align and a good, and good outcomes occur. The Allendale Police Department continues to bring impactful programs to our residents. Lieutenant Todd Griffith, in conjunction with the Bergen County Police Traffic Officer Association, secured funding for the Blue Envelope Program countywide. Uh, this program is supported by the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office and County of Bergen as well. Blue Envelope Program is, is designed to enhance communication between law enforcement and individuals with disabilities such as autism spectrum disorder. It helps improve interactions during traffic stops, making them less stressful for drivers with autism. Participants obtain a blue envelope to store important documents like their license and registration, which can be presented during stops. The program promotes inclusivity and awareness, ensuring that our officers are informed about the driver's condition. Any Allendale resident wishing to obtain a blue envelope, please feel free to contact our police headquarters or stop in anytime at our station.
Okay, great. Maybe we can get that in the newsletter this, on their next one.
We'd love that idea. I'll give you a sample one.
Okay, excellent, thank you. All right. And, um, my report, I just wanted to, um, report on fair share housing since we are finally, um, now ready to, uh, wrap it up because we have to, because we have a deadline at the end of the month. Um, we have this, uh, housing element, uh, plan that we've been working on for months and months and months, and I feel like we have a solid plan for Allendale. We've really uncovered every option that we could potentially do to make sure that we are providing affordable housing while not, um, uh, altering the town and putting so much burden on the town. So, uh, this has to now go to the land use board. And once the land use board approves it, it's going to come back to the council and we will actually have it on our June, I think it's the twenty-sixth, uh, meeting.
Amy, that's Monday at the land use board it's going.
It's Monday, yes. Yeah, not Wednesday, Wednesday's canceled.
Yep.
Um, we still actually, uh, I'm actually hoping after this round, um, because it, it is a lot of work for municipalities. There was a lot of things that didn't make sense. I'm hoping that there will be some reform to it because, um, we've always said that we are for affordable housing, there is a need for affordable housing, but not at the expense of, of public safety and the environment and, uh, you know, infrastructure of town. So, um, it, it has to be done, but it has to be done differently in my opinion, but we have always been compliant, we are going to be compliant again. And, um, we're just, I just really hope that there is going to be some legislative change and some reform for the fifth round. Um, when we're still having our ongoing talks with Saddle River and Avalon Bay, as you may recall, we are, um, we are asked to provide, um, sewer capacity for, um, a massive project up there, as it's two hundred and seventy-five units, while we do like to be friendly neighbors, and we did actually provide sewer access to their one hundred and twenty-nine, one hundred percent inclusionary development. We are, um, concerned that this will overburden our infrastructure, so we have our engineers' report that says in fact that we really, the capacity is too much. Um, it will just max out our capacity and of course their engineers are saying something different, so we're kind of in the middle of that right now. We're having a meeting next week and to be continued, but we are still, um, we're still on that, it's still happening. Um, as Councilman O'Toole mentioned, we did have our PBA negotiations. I think they went really well. I'm really proud of this, um, contract. I think everybody's happy. Um, I think the police officers know how much we do appreciate them. We want to make sure that they feel that they are compensated, um, for the work that they do. And, you know, we're not the lowest paying, we're not the highest paying, but we're, we're a competitive force and, um, and we really, we love the culture that has been created uh, by Chief Mike Dillon. It's, it's different, we have a great relationship with them and that's nothing that's ever been in the past. So, um, so yeah, I think everybody, you know, I think we should be really happy and I'm proud of all the work we did. It was a marathon meeting that day, but it was worth it. And Linda, I just want to say thank you for all the work you did on the elections. They are a well-oiled machine now. You've got the flow and the process and always thinking of new ways and new, you know, properties to maybe even make it better. Um, and also thank you for, uh, and I try not to do this, but I did it again, the last minute agenda changes, uh, like right up to the last hour with especially this one, it was important and I appreciate that. So with that, I'd like to open the meeting up. Is there any unfinished business or any new business up here? Um, I'd like to open up the meeting to public comment. If anybody has anything to comment, come on up. Hello, please state your name, sir, and your address.
Walter Woodner, thirtieth Hamilton.
The peanut gallery.
Uh, I got a couple of questions, a lot of them.
They may not have answered.
First of all, I know you have nothing to do with this, but I'm annoyed that I took both. You know, I just have to say that. Second, because I wanted to, but, uh, the mural. I think costs seventy-nine thousand dollars.
It actually costs more than that, but we're putting that in the budget, but we are actually receiving more funds and we're hoping to get a grant that's going to be covering most of that.
Uh, forgive me saying it this way, but is it up?
Uh, it's gonna be up. We actually, I just posted something on Facebook, um, all of the components are coming together and we're hoping to have it up, um, in time for, before school starts. So all the kids that participated in, I think there was over a hundred and something kids will get to, um, in the summer, we'll get to see it put up on the wall. It's, um, it's a very interesting piece of art, so it's going, it takes, it takes some, it's gonna take some cranes and some paintings to all come together. Um, and the, the sculptor, um, who is, was leading the design is a famous sculptor and he's also an Allendale resident. It is a very complicated process, but.
Regardless, as complex as it is, who's approving it?
What do you mean, who's approving it?
Well, I mean, they, the money I seen might have spent, I, I don't understand that, but does someone, one of you have the opportunity to approve this work that's being done?
Yeah, well, we've been working, this has been going on for over a year now. So we, we put it out to the community, we've had fundraisers with the community, people have bought tiles to help pay for it and that's all, and, and he'll be, be installing it in a couple of months.
Third thing, forgive me saying it this way, but, you know, we live in a democracy and I've listened to all your, everybody's approving and everything. No one ever, no one ever says no.
Well, we do a lot of work, um, that is actually not up here in the dais, Walter. We have meetings, um, once a month. We work behind the scenes tirelessly and we have our, we have our battles behind the scenes. And by the time we get up here, we have it all worked out. So just like, for example, we were talking about the PBA negotiations, that's been going on for months and months. We don't just come up here and introduce it for the first time. We all talk to each other, we have lots of meetings, a lot of internal meetings. So we do all that kind of behind the scenes in, in committee meetings, we call them.
I, I know most of you, I trust you totally.
Thank you.
In the work that you do, and that's why I really ignore most of my, my projects. Uh, I have to say this also, I want to thank you for the meetings which you're having at the U N Center.
Yes, we started, um, a series of educational meetings. We're not really going to be, it's not going to be the, you know, constant where every day we have something, but we're trying to bring in the county, we're trying to bring in some speakers, people who have come to us that we feel that are worthwhile for the community. For example, um, we have the county come in to just help out with passport renewal and we are having another, uh, vendor come in to talk about how to, um, create a will and get all your affairs in order and get everything, um, yeah, in a, in a lighthearted way, supposedly.
Absolutely, not the last one we had with that.
Of the town hall?
Yeah. What, what else did you call?
It was a town hall, yeah.
Well, I, I like the way you handled it, the seriously done. I'm a little embarrassed, part of the individual who made that box, like, like sat there wondering what the hell he's talking about.
Yeah.
Went through.
Sometimes people get emotional, but that's okay. We're the elected officials and we, you know, we're happy to field everybody's, uh, concerns.
It's a shame that you put up with that.
That's okay, that's what we're here for.
Who we signed up for.
We're elected officials and that's what our job is, Walter.
I, um, I would apologize for that.
That's okay, thank you though.
I think, I would be said, okay. Uh, you guys are really fantastic. I, I know of only one person, but I thank each of you, um, willing to give you a hug for what you do.
Thank you, Walter.
Well, we thank you, Walter, for.
Yeah, I'll take it.
For being, thank you for being an engaged resident and coming here.
Thank you for being here for our meetings.
And yeah.
But, yeah, we're. Walter, you symbolize getting involved, educating yourself, following through, and really understanding the process. You should be committed for that.
Yeah, I apologize for listening to last meeting. I don't take trouble for that. She rules the roost.